I'm going to call this meeting to order on October 22nd, 2019. Welcome, everyone, to our City Commission meeting. We're going to get started with our roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
President.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present.
And Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the invocation, please?
Our Father, who art in heaven, we thank you so much for the opportunity that you laid before us today. An opportunity to live up to your precepts, an opportunity to continue to strive, to reach each other through our actions, not so much of what we say, but what we do. Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to serve this great city. We ask these things in your shoes.
Thank you. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All may be seated. Tonight, we have Mark Thompson, serving as interim city manager. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No.
Thank you very much. All right, and we're going to ask Mark to introduce some new employees.
Yes, we have three new employees in the Parks and Recreation Department I'd like to bring forward. Corey Gist is a laborer in the maintenance side, Christopher Marshall, who is also a laborer on the maintenance side, and James Weems, who is our new recreation, Assistant Recreation Assistant Specialist. A specialist.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Hey, there. How are you?
Good.
I'm glad to have you.
Congratulations, guys. Welcome to the team. And before we go further, I just want to remind anyone, if you are here to speak, we do have these comment cards over by the door, so please fill one of those out and drop it in one of the, in that box right there if you need to speak tonight. Next up, we have Bruce Wilcox. He's our new CEO and president of Greater Paducah Economic Development. Welcome, Bruce.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Harless, and elected officials, and Mark, and everyone. Thank you for allowing Greater Paducah Economic Development to be on the commission's agenda this evening. The City of Paducah is a great partner with GPED, and your support's critical to our success and longevity and livelihood. And I'm honored to be here and kind of give you an update on some of the things that are going on at GPED. Most of you know I started at GPED September 9th, so I've been on board about, all of about six weeks now. So it's been a very, very busy period of time since then. But I think I've been, over the last six weeks, I've attended over 50 appointments, conference calls, meetings, luncheons, site visits, been to DC, Oak Ridge, Tennessee, you name it. It's been a very, very busy time. And there've been a lot of community leaders that have reached out and been very supportive and have assisted in getting me engaged and seen some of the assets that are specific to our community and how we can use those to attract business. So I've been very appreciative of everyone's support so far. Prior to starting with GPED, Heather Pierce, our project manager, and I attended an economic development conference in Lexington, Kentucky, sponsored by the Kentucky Institute for Economic Development. The attendees there were from across the state of Kentucky, even various parts of the United States. And as Heather and I networked with these individuals, it became really apparent to us that we, as a community, we share a lot of the same characteristics, and we're doing a lot of the same things to attract business and industry as other people are doing all over the country. And in fact, we have a lot of the similar assets that our competitors or neighboring communities actually have. In fact, Heather and I didn't speak to anyone who really identified anything or any initiative that they are doing that's unique that we are not doing, whether it be as GPED, the Chamber, the city, the county, workforce development, education, transportation, you name it. You might say, well, that's not very encouraging, Bruce, but it's really encouraging to me because when you step back and look at it, we didn't meet one individual who had as many assets or many tools in their work bag as what we have. So we have a great opportunity before us, and it's just a matter, I think, of developing a marketing plan and continuing to get everybody on the same page and have a unified voice as we go forward. One of the items shared at the conference was that 60 to 80% of economic development growth typically comes from existing business or existing industry. We all want to land that 500-job plant, right? But the reality is, those opportunities are fewer and farther between than what they used to be. To put it in perspective, there are between 15,000 and 18,000 economic development organizations across the United States, and they're all swinging for that home run that I'm talking about. And they're looking for the same opportunities that we are. In the year 2000, there were 12,500 large-scale jobs or large-scale projects. And let me put that in perspective for you. A large-scale project is one that's defined as having a million dollars of capital investment, or it creates 50 jobs, or it involves a building of 20,000 square feet. One of those three characteristics, or it could be a combination of all three. So in the year 2000, there were about 12,500 of those. In the year 2005, that number dropped to 6,500. Fast forward all the way up to 2015, it was 5,500. Last year, it was 4,900. So the big, the big, big-scale opportunities, they're harder to find, they're out there, but everybody's going after them, and a lot of people going after not a lot of opportunities. That's why it's very important for us to have a very vibrant business and retention strategy. That's where we've spent the majority of our time since I've been there over the past six weeks, and even GPED had been doing it before I had gotten there as well. One of the tools that we use at GPED to measure our success or what we're doing is a scorecard. And that scorecard was developed as part of the Forward Paducah Plan. Within that Forward Paducah Plan, there are 20 measures, all aimed at growing economic development. We report these measurements to our Board of Directors every month. Some of those activities are really more outcome-driven, with data based upon trailing indicators. The thing that we want to focus on are the day-to-day activities, they're going to be predictive activities that are going to drive long-term economic growth. So during the past quarter, GPED participated in 121 activities aimed at driving long-term economic growth. 58 of those activities centered around one of three areas: workforce development, working with existing businesses on retaining them or helping them expand, and then working with the private sector. We currently have 11 projects in the pipeline. Four of those have come on board in the last six weeks. Seven of them have been in the pipeline for a long time, some of them for a very long period of time. The four new projects that we have had come on board in the last six weeks, two of them relate to working with existing businesses on their expanding their footprint within Paducah. Could potentially be some, some great opportunities for some folks and some very good jobs. One of them is working with a prospective startup on a technology company. And then, most recently, we are, started working with a gentleman who has obtained a patent pending status from the Patent Administration on a product that he's developed. So we've connected him with Chris Wildridge and the Murray State University small-business folks and some other people trying to help him get things going there. We've also worked, I'm sure most of you have seen in the news, we've worked with Teletac. They recently announced 100 jobs. They got a new contract with a provider out in California. We worked with them on the interviewing process in Mary Ann Medlock and workforce development. We've also been working with Teletac on the expanded Pats bus route out there to assist their, their families and their, and their workers to get affordable transportation. We're currently working on trying to find some form of daycare facilities out there to try to help their families out there. That's, that's becoming a big issue for them as well. Then we were also involved with the Dippin' Dots announcements of 30 jobs that you probably saw in the paper as well. So a lot of, lot of activities going on. One of the big things also that we've identified as far as attracting new business is a, a big company or a big production facility coming into town, they're going to be a big consumer of energy, electricity. So I've made it a point to work, to purposely reach out to the three of our existing electric companies: Jackson Purchase Electric, Big Rivers Electric, Paducah Power, and TVA. All three of those entities have been or are involved in discussions with the opportunities that we have before us at this point. And actually, Thursday, I'm, I'm heading over to Big Rivers Electric, DB Wilson, to tour their, their facility there, to spend some time with them. We've also spent a lot of time with our regional director from the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development, with the city's Economic Development Stakeholders Group, the Community and Economic Development Council at PAD, Purchase Area Development District, PACRO. Spent a fair amount of time with individuals from the Department of Energy, WKCTC, Murray State University, UK College of Engineering, certain elected officials, some of you here today. And then we'll also be attending the Kentucky Association for Economic Development Forum in mid-November. And then we'll also be attending the KEDFA meeting December 12th in Frankfurt. So hopefully, you can see, all of our efforts are aimed at eliminating barriers for growth and trying to unify our community and all of the players to help try, to present a cohesive message to attract business and grow industry. Financially, we're stable. We're very appreciative, as I mentioned, of the city's continued support, and we've even met with a few investors over the past six weeks, and they've been very kind and supportive as well. In the coming weeks, we'll be negotiating our $1.6 million note renewal with KEDFA. That note actually matures in December, and I've kind of got a verbal agreement on that things are going to work out, and we'll probably be locking that in for another five-year period and amortizing that out as well. For fiscal year 2020, we've got about $500,000 in debt service due, so still paying on, on a lot of projects that, that we have and initiatives that have been put in place thus far. As far as our assets go, we'll be taking back possession of 401 Kentucky Avenue. That's the old Teletac building, People's Bank building. I'm sure you all have seen that in the paper as well. Teletac's vacated the building, and they're consolidating their operations out into the Commerce Park. They're putting all of their people in one location out there. We're also active and involved in negotiating the lease renewal with Teletac for their building out on the Commerce Park as well. Our plans with the 401 Kentucky Avenue is to continue to market it for economic development and actually probably list it with a realtor to see if there's any interest for a private investor to, to take that and do something with it themselves as well. We've also filed for our TVA in lieu of tax money with, with McCracken County, and our intention with those monies is to clean up our existing properties and to get our properties, wetland mitigation, those types of things, to get them up to where they're, that are able to be marketed going forward. So long story short, it's been a very busy six weeks. It's been an enjoyable period of time. I thoroughly enjoyed it, and I look forward to working with you all. So this is my first presentation to you all. I don't know if it's what you expect or what you want. I could do a PowerPoint next time, or whatever you all want to do. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions from you or, or anybody here.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I will say, thank you for being here. One of the goals of a new CEO as president was after we heard the commission, most, both commissions, county and our city commission, say we'd like to have more updates more often, more communication, we like to know what's going on. There's a lot of city taxpayer dollars that go into GPED, and we want to make sure that this body is up to date as, as much as possible. So thank you for being here, six weeks into the job. I hope we can make it a regular occurrence to see you here, and I think what you gave us today was very practical. Do you all agree that, if there's any feedback, maybe you all can share with me, and I can share with Bruce to, for the next time, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, no, sir. No, not from the, not from the, not from the audience. You can ask, you can make a comment later if you'd like. Any other thoughts, comments? No? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
All right. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless a board member so requests. I do have an action that I would like to take, and then if anyone else has anything they'd like to remove. Actually, let me do that first. Does anyone have anything they'd like to remove tonight? No? All right. Before we do that, I'm going to make a motion that we suspend the orders and pull off item G, which is the approval of the contract with HDR, and move it to below the adoption of ordinances. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? I'm just doing this for clarity purposes, so we don't approve a contract before we move the money, we're just making it make sense. All right. Roll call, please. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And then I will ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval.
Approved minutes for the October 8th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting, receive and file documents. Reappoint Henry Barber to the Tree Advisory Board. This term shall expire July 26th, 2023. Personnel actions. A municipal order accepting grants funds through the Global Fire Prevention Grant in the amount of $1,500 for the purchase of one laptop computer to aid in the fire investigations and authorizing the mayor to execute the grant agreement and all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting grant funds through the Federal Highway Administration for a recreational trails program grant in the amount of $100,000 for the Perkins Creek Bob Lieber Bridge Project and authorizing the mayor to execute this grant agreement and all documents related to same.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And I think Commissioner Abraham is next.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order adopting change order number three, to the license and service agreement with Tyler Technologies, Inc., for the computer-aided dispatch system for the City of Paducah 911 Services Division for a price reduction in a total amount of $65,560. The purchase of state photo-download software and the elimination of other software resulting in a software credit of $18,850 to be used on the future software needs and authorizing the mayor to execute the change order be adopted.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioners, it's not real often that I get to come to you and tell you that we have some savings, but in this case, we do. This is related to the 911 CAD software program that's currently being installed. The go-live date on that is December the 17th, so we're very close to being able to push that out. What we realized moving through that process over the last few months is that there were some things in there that we needed and some things that we didn't need. And so what we didn't need resulted in that credit of the $65,000. And then we had to, we realized that the, when that program was put together, that we missed one thing, and that was the state photo ID. And so that was a, a purchase that was in there, that we used some of that credited money, so there's no money really exchanging hands, we've already paid them. But the city received back the $65,000, and then we have an $18,000 worth of credit with them for future software stuff, which covers licensing and annual maintenance and things like that.
Great news. Any questions, comments? No? All right. Roll call, please. Thank you so much, Chief.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner McElroy?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 54, Article 2, Smoking in Public Places, Division 2, Enclosed Public Places, Places of Employment, and Certain Outdoor Places of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section 5451 and 5452 of the Code of Ordinances to allow for the operation of cigar, cigar bars or cigar lounges in the City of Paducah. The cigar bar or cigar lounge must clearly state in its name and marketing that if it is a cigar bar or cigar lounge, derive at least 10% of its gross revenue from the onsite sale of tobacco products, which products shall not include the sale of cigarettes, electronic smoking devices, or vaping liquids, and maintain, maintain an onsite walk-in humidor storing tobacco products for the intent of resale of said tobacco products. Smoking in a cigar bar or cigar, cigar lounge shall be limited to cigars and pipe tobacco.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And Commissioner Watkins?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2019-6-8578, entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky, annual operating budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020, ordinance 2019-6-8578, be amended by the following reappropriation transfer of $72,000 from the fiscal year 20, unreserved general fund balance to the city block project account.
Second.
Any discussion about this item tonight? Questions, concerns? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
And city clerk, do you mind reading the motion for the municipal order that we moved?
A municipal order authorizing and approving an agreement between the City of Paducah and HDR Engineering Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $72,000 for professional geotechnical analysis and environmental review services for the city-owned parcel located at South Second and Broadway City Block.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? No? All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right. We're going to move into introduction of ordinances. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving and authorizing the execution of an inter-local cooperative agreement among the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the McCracken County Property Valuation Administrator for the hiring of a new employee to complete property inspections within the city limits of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement between the City of Paducah and the McCracken County Property Valuation Administration for the purpose of hiring a new employee for the PVA to complete property inspections within the City of Paducah. This interlocal cooperative agreement will be in the amount of $13,335, with a term beginning on the date of execution until September 30, 2020.
Second.
Great. Any questions, comments? I think the city clerk is prepared, not repaired, to speak on this if we have any questions. Everyone good?
Everybody talked about it?
Okay, great. All right. Let's move on. We're going to move into discussion, and Commissioner Watkins wants to have a discussion about restricting dogs at community events.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Brought it up last meeting and say a couple of same things and add one remark to it. I just think we need to look at the idea of making some restrictions for the safety of people who attend Paducah, City of Paducah-sponsored events like Barbecue on the River. I've been to every one of them. I think this was, what, 25 years, Commissioner Wilson, and I've been to every single one of them, and it used to be a problem. We addressed it. It was basically repealed, dealing with muzzles, and I understand that was an issue, some people didn't want their, didn't feel like it was safe for the dogs to wear muzzles, and I understand that perfectly well. But this past Barbecue on the River, I was there all three days, just during the lunch period, and I counted approximately 20 dogs, and none, of course, had a muzzle on them. And there was one Great Dane, four German Shepherds, three pit bulls, among others. And these were large dogs. The Great Dane was probably, you know, 98 to 100 pounds, I don't know. One of the German Shepherds was 75 to 85 pounds, and had a sign draped over it that said, "Hot Dog, Stay Away," or something along that line, "Keep Your Distance." I'm not sure exactly what it said. A young lady was, had it on a leash, but there was another German Shepherd walking by, and this one was trying to attack the other one with all these people crowded around it. It got pretty ugly, and she was struggling and fighting all she could to try to hold the, keep the dogs apart. And, and I, you know, just think back, just, it was just a few weeks ago, a young child was killed by rottweilers in the City of Paducah a few short years ago. Y'all probably remember, a young child in Ballard County was killed by pit bulls, next-door neighbor's dogs. And so it can happen, and when it's 95 degrees, as it was this year, and you've got, you know, 40,000 to 50,000 people at its peak, and you've got all these dogs down there, and I'm not talking about little poodles or chihuahuas, these are big, big dogs. And, and all this food, and something could happen in an instant that could really spell disaster. And I talked to Danny Brown, who's recently, well, been retired a little while, but 23-year dog warden for the City of Paducah and then McCracken County when they were murdered. And he's emailed me several times and highly opposed to the situation as it, as it is. He called it a time bomb waiting to blow up, and somebody gets seriously hurt. And he said, "Dogs do not belong in that kind of crowd with people. They're not, that's not their behavior, is not conducive to that type of atmosphere." And he said, "Another thing to consider, if someone is bitten by a dog, and you can't find the dog, or they disappear, or for some reason the dog is not known, or not kept there to be checked, then the person who is bitten has to undergo rabies shots." And so I just think, you know, that, that I don't favor going back to using muzzles because that probably is a little inhumane. But I just can't see that, I know people are proud of their animals, are proud of their dogs, they want to show them off, but when you've got 40,000 people in 95-degree heat with a lot of, how many tons of barbecue, Q and chicken, I just don't think that is a, a good idea. I just think it's a disaster waiting to happen. I think someone, I hope not, and pray not, but something really bad could happen, and I think we need to preempt that and look at, I think, probably the muzzling is not a good idea. I think we just need to ban them from public festivals of, of a large size. So just throwing it out there.
Do you have, like, a definition of what you would consider a large festival for, for banning them?
Well, I think Commissioner Abraham, didn't you talk to, uh, who? And this, and they, a veterinarian that suggested a crowd, I know this is not very big crowd, but I think it was...
Well, just generally, talking about dogs in that type of environment was what my conversation with one of the veterinarians out at the clinic. And, and this is, like you said, this is not the first time this has come up. I'm a dog lover, I have two. And personally, I would not entertain the thought of taking either one of those dogs down there because of some of the things that you've mentioned. As far as a crowd, I mean, 25,000 people? I just think we need to make a, I think it's, I think it's always wise when we have an event to always go back and reassess it and look at it, and, and try to look at, from a safety standpoint, what we could do, potential, potential situations. It may not be 100% of the time, but can we remove that, that threat? I, I think that's a responsible thing to do. And again, it, it really doesn't matter the size of the dog. I mean, little dog, I had a, I had a little Jack Russell, and he was just, he was mean, man, sometimes. But when you have that many people, and I mean, like that... But when you have that many people, and I mean, like that, large dogs, small dogs, you got a ton of meat cooking, it's hot, kids are head-level, I mean, it's just, we're really blessed that nothing's happened thus far. So I'm all in favor of not allowing dogs at those events like Barbecue on the River or any other festivals that we have downtown where it's going to be that many people shoulder to shoulder. So I agree with you. I think it's something that we really need to take, take actions on, so.
I guess my question is how you define, you know, what festivals it would be, they would be banned from, or what they might be allowed for? For example, Saturday, I was at Oktoberfest, and I have to say, there were a lot of dogs there. Not near the crowd is Barbecue on the River. And I agree, I was stunned at Barbecue on the River to see a lot of them there. I think when we changed it years, several years ago, you were on the commission as well, when we removed the muzzle, it was said that we would leave it up to the festival organizer at that time, whether or not they would be allowed there. So obviously, it would be a change from that, and I think we would need to make sure we were well-publicizing, because for Barbecue on the River and some of the others, people do come from out of town, they do have their dogs with them, and we don't want, you know, I mean, I guess, I mean, they just have to make the decision. They can't come in to the event with, if they have a dog with them. So those are the questions. How do you define what they would be allowed to attend and what they wouldn't?
Yeah. And maybe we just should exclude them all, so that one can say, "Well, you let them do, and they only had 20 people more than we had at our festival." And I don't, I don't think putting it on the festival organizer is really a fair thing to do, but maybe we need a number, maybe we don't, I don't know. But I would be in favor of any festival of any size at all, that I just don't think it's a good idea, I don't think it's healthy, I don't think it's sanitary with food there, and I sure don't think it's safe. Police chief, would you, do you have any thoughts, or would you want to? Put you on the spot, chief, sorry about that.
Well, he's coming. Do we have any idea what other cities do? You know, how they might define that, how they might handle it? That might be helpful.
Yeah.
That's something we can ask LC to find for us.
The only comment I would have would be that it would be difficult sometimes to estimate a crowd, and for enforcement of that, if you were at 499, if you set the number of 500 people or more, we would have to have, someone would have to have a counter of some kind to count the people, you know, for, if someone refused to remove the animal and a citation was issued of some kind, that would, that would present some challenges for us. So that would just be a consideration I would have. I think we are very fortunate, we haven't had any incidents that I'm aware of in the years that it's, that it's been going on.
I just think there are things we would have to take in consideration, because like Barbecue on the River, you're just walking up to it. There's not really, like, any fencing or anything, so you could be on the Quilt Museum parking lot, or on their lawn, and are you or aren't you part of the Barbecue on the River? So those are just things that I think we would need to address and make any change.
Well, I was also going to say, in the, in the current ordinance, as it reads, it actually says that no person shall bring a dog into an area designated for special community events during the time such events are occurring unless the dog is, one, licensed by McCracken County Animal Control or any other state or county, and then, number two, restrained by a leash or other lead that is no longer than three feet. So there are controls on. I have a feeling that that's really hard to enforce, so we probably don't walk up and ask someone for their license.
I don't even know how you get a license.
Are we talking service dogs?
That's not what it says in this ordinance.
Well, maybe it should.
It should say service dogs, because that right there is, what does that mean? And a three-foot leash? I mean, that's, that's, you're talking about a Great Dane weighing 100 pounds, three feet?
All these leashes where I saw were over three feet.
I mean, that's, that's...
That is what it currently says, though, I think.
You could have kicked them out. You already had the power.
I'll start to kick the Great Dane out, and then I'd decide not to.
Do you know what licensed means? Does anyone know what that means?
I bet that's service.
That's just the state license.
Or how do you get there? How do you get it, is the question? I know what it means.
You get it from your animal control question.
Animal control question. So somehow you register or something with animal control.
Well, actually, it's the state, when, when they're vaccinated, you get a license.
Oh.
So my dog is licensed.
Excuse me. We are conducting business up here, and if you can't be quiet while we're conducting business, I'm going to ask you to leave. Someone, do you want to be escorted out, sir? We're conducting business.
No, I'm just...
Thank you. I'm sorry. What did, did I miss something?
No.
We may all have licensed dogs. Just don't carry your licenses.
But we don't carry it. Thank you, chief.
They have it on their, they have it on their...
On their collar. Excuse me? Guys, I'm serious. We are conducting business. Please, please. All right. So we want to keep this discussion going. It sounds like there is some interest in doing something.
Yeah. Because even though we have, if we have dogs and they're up on their shots, they're licensed, they still might bite someone.
Right, for sure.
So that, I think that ordinance, we need to look at that, and I'm with you, Commissioner. We just, just decided, if we're going to do this, then we do it across the board.
Yeah. I think so, too. I agree with that. I think it's the only fair way to do it.
I think my only caveat would be, I think Barbecue on the River is a threshold that hardly any of our other events meet that threshold of the people, the crowds, the group. I do know that there are several people who host 5Ks, and they enjoy having their dogs, allowing dogs to come run with them, or walk with them, or things like that, and those are, of course, smaller crowds.
I think there's one of those coming up.
That encourage participation of animals, so...
Which one?
I think it's the Carson Center, I believe, that I've seen some where they say that, about you could bring your dogs and for that. So I think those are just all things that would have to be worked out in the ordinance. Maybe looking at what some of other communities are doing would be helpful for that, and to address those.
Yeah. And maybe we need to talk to some of these sponsors not to advertise, "Bring your dogs."
I mean, if it's a dog event, like, we've had dogs before. It's like, I'm going to take your dog out to the dog park. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, the environment is...
Leave your dog at home when you go to the dog park.
Well, I mean...
Well, there's the Wolf, Wolftober.
We just had that this weekend.
There are dog events.
So there are going to be some exceptions, of course.
Sure.
And that's cool, you can't bring your dog to this, but here you go. We got an event for you, pooch. Right?
Any other discussion? Commissioner Watkins, are you satisfied with the discussion?
Yes, yes. I'd just like to get a consensus and try to move forward fairly soon, and...
All right.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Next up, we have Katie Axe to do a presentation. We had, actually had this originally on the agenda for, during fall break, and we understood some people were afraid they would miss it. So Katie is back with an updated presentation. Thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor and Commission. I'm Katie Axe. I'm the Downtown Development Specialist and the Main Street Director. This presentation was presented two weeks ago to give the commission an update on where we stand with the pre-development agreement with Wayland Ventures, but we have updated it to address some of the public comments that we have received over the last two weeks. So just to be familiar with where we are, back in April, the commission adopted and approved a pre-development agreement with Wayland Ventures, a private development firm out of Louisville, Kentucky, to enter into an exclusive 12-month agreement for planning, design, and development. And that is what the extent of the scope is for this mutual agreement. Under that agreement, the developer was obligated to, at their sole expense, to undertake development activities. That included coming up with a site plan and a development program that included a hotel, mixed-use residential and retail, a public open space, and continue to have off-street public parking. That program would also need to consider some of the concerns that we had heard early on from the public, including maintaining view sheds, ensuring that the design character complemented our historic downtown, and that there was market demand to facilitate this development, as well as our TIF application. The city obligations were about site due diligence. The city owns the site, and we committed to undertake environmental review, geotech analysis, a utility assessment, and a parking assessment. One of the questions from the last time, what was a geotech analysis? And that is specifically about understanding the soil qualities to support a future construction project. So they do soil borings, they understand the density, strength, and moisture content, so that they can make engineering and architectural decisions about how to build future structures. We are also doing ongoing stakeholder engagement with community organizations, with individuals, and with the general public, and this links with our continued efforts to establish the TIF district prior to any transfer of property. There have been no negotiations or terms about transfer of property. That will come after the end of the completion of this pre-development agreement, but we're working towards that. So where we stand right now, we completed the environmental review, we've gotten preliminary approval, we are on the cusp of engaging the independent consultant for the TIF application. That was, that contract was approved by the commission, and in early November, we'll be doing a site visit and engaging the independent consultant for the TIF. We've just approved the Phase Two environmental work and the geotech analysis, so that will kick off next week, and then in the very near future, we'll be looking at parking assessment and then also utility assessment. The developer has completed a conceptual site plan and conceptual design. That's what we're bringing to you, as well as stakeholder groups and the public, to get feedback about what those, what that design looks like. Throughout this process, they're doing market analysis and feasibility analysis, and working towards a finalized design and a development program that includes all of those components that were in the pre-development agreement. So the site that we're talking about that was in our agreement was the municipal parking lot at Second and Broadway. And the goals that we had before we had any designs or site plans were, first and foremost, connectivity, to think about how this space can be used visually, as well as in the built environment, to connect to cultural anchors like the Carson Center, the Convention Center, to our riverfront, which is our most underutilized asset, and then up towards our historic downtown. Second most is to think about this entire site as a place of a destination, to draw more people, and more people, but gets more activity, more activity, but gets more commerce, which is part of our economic development initiatives. So to think about a town square, a place where people can gather, spend time, and support our local businesses. Third, there used to be historic buildings here, and part of our goals is to reestablish the historic character of the streetscape, not necessarily to replicate this, but to have the buildings complement what the size and scale used to be at the site. Fourth is to continue to maintain public parking, and to make sure that that is available to the public, that it's off-street, and can be used flexibly for future events, markets, and other types of festivals. And then fourth, understanding that the corner of Second and Broadway remains special to this community, that we want to continue to encourage that as being an activity hub, and to strengthen its public use. So this is the conceptual design plan. It includes the Boutique Hotel on Jefferson Street between Water and Second, two mixed-use buildings on Broadway, a public promenade, a hardscape with seating and landscaping and activity that would connect the Yizer Market House to the Quilt Museum, and then a public, a public softscape, a park that would have the gazebo, the carriage, art à la carte along Water Street. Again, connectivity being the main goal here, with access from downtown, Maiden Alley, to the river, and then onwards to the Convention Center. So the current view, if you were to stand on the top of Shandys, looking down, and the proposed campus view that has all four of those development pieces together, and demonstrating the connections to the rest of the built environment. Standing at the gazebo intersection, looking at the mixed-use retail residential with the corner of Broadway and Second still being used for public, public use and activity. Standing at the flood wall, looking up Broadway with 100 block on your left, and the new residential, mixed-use residential and retail on the right, reestablishing the streetscape and encouraging pedestrian activity and commercial activity between, between the two buildings. Again, part of this is making sure that we continue to enhance and leverage our historic assets, and making sure that whatever's proposed complements what currently exists. One of the stakeholder meetings that we had since we last met with you was Wayland Ventures' meeting with the Main Street Board of Directors and the Design Committee jointly, and we didn't know, but we found out that the original curb, the brick curb at Broadway and Water still maintain, is still there. You can see it, it has the bollards around it, and that is a design feature that we would like to make sure that we preserve and enhance and also recognize, and we wouldn't know that if we hadn't done our, our engagement with our stakeholder groups. And more pictures of what used to be, and kind of the dilapidated state of this block back in the 1970s and 80s. And this stakeholder engagement list continues to grow and morph as we go through these, these meetings. In the last two weeks, we've met with Paducah Hospitality Association, the Yizer Board of Directors, Main Street Board of Directors, and the Joint Design Committee, as well as ongoing conversations with civic beautification. We look forward to, in the next two weeks, meeting with the condo association, with the Paducah Garden Clubs, and also Market House Theater. This project, we need to remind ourselves, is part of a larger vision, a larger vision that this community has been working towards for decades, and is linked with our TIF district in terms of riverfront redevelopment, connecting Carson Center to the Convention Center, supporting and continuing to grow our commercial district, and how do all of those link together for economic development, creative placemaking, and continuing to preserve the unique character of our neighborhoods. I think we've seen many visions of the riverfront. This is the third or fourth design, but they all have the same features of spurring new activity, whether it is through recreational assets, through expansion of the excursion dock, encouraging the riverboat industry to continue to come to Paducah, through showroom, lounge, development, wayfinding, and pedestrian connections, whether it's on the wet side or the dry side. This project fits into that larger whole. It is not the only project, it is one of which we hope to be many, for realizing the vision of a revitalized downtown and a riverfront. So we've talked about this in the last, the last meeting, but parking management continues to be something that we hear from folks. We want to continue to emphasize that off-street public parking is part of this development, and we are undertaking the assessment to understand, how do we better manage our parking inventory and our parking assets better? Half of our land used in downtown is devoted to parking. We have over 2,500 private parkings, or we have over 2,500 off-street parking spots, and then additional on-street parking spots. How do we use information, technology, transportation management, accessibility to better manage this? And that's what the assessment is going to look like, and we'll be undertaking that in the very near future. I know that there are some concerns from the public about public events. One of the goals of this development project was to continue to encourage and support and provide a space for public events. We have approximately 30 events every year that happen downtown, big ones and small ones, and ones in between, public events and private events, and the joint. The parking lot that is part of this development will get the necessary repairs to not only continue to support off-street public parking, but also have the infrastructure and the amenities to encourage public events. So public events aren't going away. We actually believe that this development will continue to facilitate and grow that special aspect of our downtown. We've also heard questions around, you know, why not continue to redevelop our vacant historic buildings? We have lots of historic buildings. What more can be done for, for these buildings? And this is part of the Main Street mission, is, and part... And this is part of the Main Street mission, and part of the city's strategic plan, is to continue to work with private property owners to facilitate the redevelopment and the preservation of historic buildings. We do that through the Main Street program, we do that through our downtown development grants, through roofs, new business grants, upper-story residential, and facade money. We do this through connecting private property owners with businesses looking to come to downtown. And then we also do that through design and technical assistance. So we will continue to do that, but there are also businesses that want to be downtown that our current building stock cannot meet their needs. So providing new, in addition to continuing to support the historic, is going to be our approach, and will continue to facilitate more activity and more commercial development in our downtown. And then a new one, I think what we've heard in the last two weeks is a lot of questions around site selection. And so I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on the hotel market study, but I think it's important to mention why this site. Back in January, as part of the TIF application, the city completed a hotel market study to look at eight different sites within the TIF district, both downtown and also on the riverfront, to understand what the best site would be to support a hotel that could generate new activity, more people that are coming, because that was the requirement as part of our TIF application. And so we looked at eight potential sites, four of which were public, four of which were private or had an agreement already in place, and we had seven different criteria that you can see here, both site ownership, whether it is public or private, existing use, potential for hotel development and parking, marketability, visibility, accessibility, and adjacent amenities. And what was concluded from this was that the municipal parking lot at Second Broadway was the most advantageous for meeting this criteria, for supporting the local investment that would be required for the TIF, and for generating the new commercial activity that we wanted to support in this area. It provides the size requirements, it provides the ownership opportunities to enter into development agreements, and specifically about its location, it markets to a downtown crowd, one that wants to go to arts and culture and entertainment and hospitality industries, and for us to continue to grow that. And so that was the conclusion of our market study, and Wayland Ventures, on their own, is continuing to refine their own assessments about the site and market analysis, and what a hotel development, as part of a larger development, could look like. So we know that we got a lot of questions of, we really like this project, why not another location? This is a little bit of information of how we came to this conclusion about this particular site, and it's not to say that there aren't opportunities at future sites. We have lots of development potential, and we would love to continue to engage with developers about projects within the TIF district and more broadly within Paducah. So where we are with schedule and next steps, this is kind of a very high-level outline of where, where we've been over the last year, and where we're going on three different kind of buckets of tasks. Both the TIF district, where we are right now is, you know, we've just gotten preliminary approval in August, we're upon the cusp of engaging the independent consultant, and working towards having the state increment rate approved in next year. The developer has been doing their market analysis, a feasibility analysis, we have a conceptual design that is being reviewed by the public, as well as stakeholder groups. They will be moving in the near future towards programming and phasing, and eventually coming up with a final, final design and development plan. And then the city's obligations is, we've completed our environmental Phase One, we are undertaking the Phase Two in geotech analysis, and in the near future, we'll be doing the parking and utility assessment. How this is all packaged together are three specific deliverables, a TIF approval, a final development agreement, and eventually a transfer of property. But those terms and those details still need to be worked out. So we do have our website up to date, we have an email for the public to ask us questions, provide us input. We have started a frequently asked questions, and that's an ongoing living document as we continue to get more feedback, so we encourage people to send us feedback, we'll continue to update that. And that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Katie tonight, or comments? It's a great presentation. I do want to ask, the frequently asked questions, is it already up on the website?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And those were questions that we received, I think Marshall Davis is here, he sent us some questions, and those are answered on that frequently asked question sheet as well as other questions we've had.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments for Katie? No? All right, thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you.
All right, Mark, do you have anything to report tonight?
No additional comments, no.
All right, sounds good. Anyone from the Board of Commissioners want to have any comments? No? I will say that this Saturday, we are having a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the first bike lanes to be put in the city of Paducah on Joe Clifton Drive, so probably everyone has noticed that there's been some roadwork going on in front of Carson Park. That work will be finished on Friday, we will have an event from 10 to noon, I think Bike World's involved, NeuroRestorative is going to be giving out some things, and we're going to give our community a chance to ride on the first bike lanes. And then the district engineer told me today that they will then open that road immediately after this event, so it'll be functional by Saturday. Since Jim's not here to go over all of the events, I know there's another block party Friday night, made me think of that. And the 400 block, correct?
Yes.
Excellent, starts at 4?
Four to nine.
Four to nine PM. Any other events you can think of?
It's also the last week of Farmer's Market.
Oh, wow. That's sad.
So yes, we had a great season.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are the activities with Bike World's Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay.
And 10 to noon.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else come to mind? All right. Okay, Mr. Beeler, I just wanted, before you come up, comments are meant to be directed towards the elected body, so do you want to ask Bruce the question after the meeting, or do you have a comment to direct to this body?
I can direct to you.
Okay, great.
First, let me apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt anybody, but I understood Mr. Wilcox to ask y'all if you had any questions, and then he turned and addressed the crowd, so I thought it was okay to ask a question.
Understood.
We had an extensive conversation in early 2018 about South Side of Town, if y'all recall, and I understood that he was over the empty buildings, is what I was listening to a while ago. Are there any plans in the city to clean up the South Side, the two old hotels, Sambo's, and the Pepsi-Cola plant?
Those are privately owned properties?
I understand.
Okay.
But they still look bad.
They do.
I can't help what it looks like over there. But I mean, I did address this once before, as y'all well-known, and I just wondered, was there any plans to do anything about it? And yes, they are privately owned, but still, yet, they're an eyesore.
They are an eyesore, I agree with you. At one point, actually, I was working with Chief Cherry on the old residential care building, hoping that we had a buyer. This was before Bruce came on. Unfortunately, it didn't work out, but we did get a lot of good information for the next group that might be interested in coming along. I do know there are some announcements coming soon about some new development happening over there. It's small but meaningful development that I know is coming, I think there's an expansion coming from one of the businesses over there, so there is some activity happening, for sure.
Okay, that's all I had, I didn't mean to interrupt, and on Wendell's behalf, most of us guys are a little hard of hearing. I've got two hearing aids, we don't mean to be loud, unfortunately, we are.
I appreciate that apology, thank you. All right, just got a new one on here, is it Evita?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Evita Lynn. I just wanted to address the renewal project real quick, because hearing all the news about it, that I was just curious if any of the funds that were going to come from that were going to go to low-income housing options, because that's a major issue in Paducah. I'm 35 years old, and I know a lot of people my age who can't afford a home, they're still renting, so that's something I'd be interested to hear, if any of that was going to profit low income. Also, because I see places like the Walter Jettan, that has low-income housing, their steps are in shambles, people live in there, and it doesn't even look like it should be a habitable building, and so it frustrates me to see low-income people struggling and not being able to find affordable, safe housing, and we're talking about building a whole new hotel and condos for wealthier people, that really bothers me. And I also wanted to speak on behalf of my friend Carrigan, who is the person who wrote the grant for the Midtown Alliance for the low-income houses that the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance wants to build, and I heard that there are some complaints from the urban renewal planners there, and they're sounding mostly aesthetic complaints. I was going to be a part of that program as a project manager, but had health issues come up, but I helped Carrigan relocate from Michigan to come to Paducah, and encouraged her to come here with her fiance, and become a part of this community. She wrote the grant, got the money, and now there's people in the Fountain Avenue neighborhood who are very privileged people, coming in and making complaints about these low-income families, becoming a part of the neighborhood, who are they, what kind of families they're going to be, and it doesn't really feel like a welcoming environment for low-income people anywhere in Paducah. And I just feel like that's something that needs to be addressed also, and I'm really proud of her, and proud to be her friend, and happy that I encouraged her to come here and make Paducah her home, but she does not feel welcome here because of how she was spoken to in the meeting earlier today with the urban.
I've got to keep you on topic, because it wasn't on our agenda to talk about that tonight, but you are definitely welcome to send us emails with details about that. I don't know if many of us know about what you're speaking of.
Okay.
But I will ask Katie, since she's probably still here, if not, can we answer the question about low, not now, but on the frequently asked questions about the low income? I know the city commission has a goal of making more diverse housing options available in the city, and that's part of this conversation, so Katie can answer that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for being here, appreciate you. All right, Mr. Ron Ward?
My legs are still from setting. Yeah, well, I will point out one thing, I'm mainly going to talk about Mr. Wilcox here. I drove through downtown, and there are like, in the side streets, and six on down, and there are like 29 vacant storefronts. And so I mean, that thing down on the river, right, the pictures are very pretty, and I realized that, but if you can fill those, what's going to happen to all the other vacant buildings? So I mean, that's something to think about. And then I'll move on to what I was going to ask Mr. Wilcox.
But again, Mr. Ward, you have to address the commission, we're not addressing the guests, so if you have a comment you'd like to make, you have to make it towards the commission.
I thought he could ask him to speak.
No, sir, he's not elected.
Oh, okay, okay.
Comments for elected, later.
Well, I would point out, I remember when they, that was the old People's Bank building, wasn't it, where the Teletext was at? I remember there was a big hoopla, I mean, when they moved all those jobs downtown, which was a good thing, and I would drive by there even this year, and there would be people walking out to the restaurants to eat lunch, and they had a hot dog cart there. Well, my question is, was there an, I mean, it's a job to get out there if you don't have a car, clear out Commerce Park, and they've got the bus now. But was there any effort made to keep those jobs downtown? And another question is, I know they spent a lot of money renovating that place, did the city or the economic development lose money on them moving out? Do y'all know that?
I don't know the answer, we can ask Bruce that after the meeting if you want to, he might know the answer to that, but it was Teletext's decision to consolidate their operations, that was their private decision as a business, to move back out to the Commerce Park. I know Commissioner Wilson actually went to a breakfast that they had, where they announced they were actually adding more jobs
Yeah.
in Paducah as well, so, yep.
Well, I just didn't know, I mean, there was a big hoopla to begin with, you know, about them coming downtown, and what a nice city it was going to be, if there was any effort to keep those jobs downtown.
I mean, the goal would be to sell the building to another company, right, that wants to be downtown, so absolutely, there'll be an effort for that.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Alberta Davis?
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm Alberta Davis. Myself and my family have invested greatly in this community. I ask you, on behalf of not only myself, but hundreds in the community, to take a step back on this rapid movement, and make sure you have good data on if we can support another hotel downtown. We just lost our fall quilt show, and the information in the hotel market analysis for arts and cultural tourism is all from 2015. The city paid out-of-town consultants $34,000 for that, for that report. I would have hoped it would have been more up-to-date using taxpayer monies. You should base your decision on more current numbers, not on information from 2015. You have been told by the, we have been told by the developers and the city staff that all this is preliminary, the renderings are not even what is going to be built. They do not know about how many hotel rooms there will be, or how the parking will be laid out. Why are we presenting this if it's not accurate? I doubt an architectural firm would have spent so much time if it's not already a close concept of the project, and know what their projections of cost and profit are going to be. You are our elected officials who represent all of Paducah and your constituents. Please take the time to go out and reach out to all the citizens and stakeholders and hear their concerns, like parking, dumpster locations, handicap accessibility, and scale and compatibility of any development with our historical district, could have on our existing downtown businesses, visitors, and our steamboat excursions who dock and park their tour buses on Second Street. This due diligence should be done on the front end, and all of the concerns of the stakeholders, businesses, and citizens should be openly addressed before you spend any more taxpayer dollars on a Phase One and a Phase Two environmental survey, especially if you're spending it with an out-of-town consultant. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? No? All right, with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. Is that moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, meeting adjourned, thank you all.